I would like to call to order this meeting of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, March 6, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Flaherty?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Ruff?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Stossberg?
Here.
Assari?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
And Councilmember Daley?
Here.
Thank you.
Welcome, especially warm welcome to Councilmember Courtney Daley, her first meeting as Representative of District 5. Welcome to the team. I'd like to start with a land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana and in Bloomington resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many Indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. Our agenda this evening will include approval of minutes. We have four sets of minutes, three from 2023 and one from 2024. We then have a section of reports, first reports from council members, then reports from the mayor and city offices. We will have an update from Bloomington Transit, and then a report from Clerk Bolden, and an update from Mayor Thompson. We then will have reports from council committees, if there are any, and then reports from the public, which is the first opportunity for members of the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda this evening. Next, we will move to appointments to boards and commissions. Then we will have legislation for second readings and resolutions. We have Resolution 2024-04, a resolution opposing the LEAP Pipeline Water Diversion Project. Then we will move to legislation for first readings. We have Ordinance 2024-02 to amend Title 8 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district in regard to Lower Cascades Park. The petitioner is the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission. Then we will have another period of public comment on items that are not on the agenda. We will discuss matters of council schedule, and then we will adjourn.
I move that the council suspend the rules and consider the minutes listed from 2023 for approval this evening in the ordinary course of business.
Aye. Okay, and we do appreciate this motion, and it's required since these meeting minutes are from the previous city council, the previous term. Any questions or comments before vote? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
I move that the minutes from September 27, 2023, October 11, 2023, October 18, 2023, and February 14, 2024 be approved.
Aye.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that that set of minutes be approved. Are there any comments or corrections? Madam Clerk?
I just wanted to note for the council, there were a couple of minor changes that were sent to me by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, so those have been made, and I apologize for not sending them out like I planned to.
That's quite all right. They were minor changes, as noted. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the set of four minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you very much. Next, we will move on to reports from council members, and I will start on my right. Councilmember Flaherty, do you have a report this evening?
No report this evening, thank you.
Councilmember Zulik?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Rallo? Councilmember Ruff?
No report tonight, thank you.
And now I'll start on my far left. Councilmember Daley, do you have a report this evening?
I do. I just wanted to say greetings to everybody. Thank you all very much for welcoming me. I'm very honored to be here. And I also wanted to announce that tomorrow evening on March 7, from 5:00 to 6:00, I'm going to have my first informal constituent meeting, just a chance to stop by, a little meet and greet, get to know me, ask me some questions. It's going to be held in Meeting Room 1B at the downtown Public Library. I'll set up something more official and ongoing as we get up and running a bit more, but right now I'm thinking I might hold regular meetings first Thursday of every month, and I'll keep you updated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger, do you have a report?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Assari?
No report.
Councilmember Stossberg?
Yes, I do have just a few dates that I want to make sure that people are aware of upcoming. So first, in case anybody's interested, there's a plan commission meeting next Monday, March 11. Second, I'll have my monthly constituent meeting on March 16, that is next Saturday, and I know it's like the end of spring break, but those are at 11:00 in the morning, right next door in the McCloskey Room, if anybody out there wants to come and say hello or has anything specific they want to share. And then lastly, for the public and also for council members, there is a special plan commission meeting on Tuesday, March 19, and that is the final hearing for that big Summit PUD project. So that might be something that council members may want to tune in for or watch after the fact, and the community might also be interested in that development project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stossberg, did you want to share the times and locations of those plan commission meetings?
Yes, the 11th is at 5:30. Actually, they're both at 5:30, on the 11th and also on the 19th, and I believe they're both in this room in council chambers.
Thank you very much. And I just would like to invite everybody, especially those who live in District 1, to my monthly constituent meeting, which will be this Saturday. It's always the second Saturday of the month at 11:00 AM until 12:00 noon, and that will be via Zoom, and you can find the link on bloomington.in.gov/council. And now we will move on to reports from the mayor and city offices, and I think John Connell is here to give us some updates from Bloomington Transit. Welcome.
Good evening. John Connell, General Manager, Bloomington Transit. I prepared a brief update. I know it's limited time, but we've been very extremely busy at Bloomington Transit on multiple projects. What I focused in on tonight were the five key projects that were stated as a priority when the ED Lit Funding Agreement was made between the city and Bloomington Public Transportation. So I'll just kind of give you a back, a little history and overview. You know, back in 2022, the city council passed the increase in the lit, and $3.8 million in ED Lit Funds were targeted to support five key transit projects and improvements. I'll walk you through each one of the five and bring you up to speed of where we're at. Given the fact that these five projects are multi-year projects, Bloomington Transit felt it was important that we had long-term funding in place to achieve the goals of the projects. So the city and Bloomington Transit entered into an interlocal cooperative agreement, committing $3.8 million a year for five years, '23 through '27. So the first project was the East West Express, a version of a bus rapid transit system. So we do have a feasibility study and corridor analysis and cost benefit analysis study underway. It's about halfway there. We've launched transformbt.com. If you go to that website, you can see the information regarding the study. We have since branded that project as the Green Line. So we fully anticipate that the study will require some dedicated bus lanes through the corridor. So we're excited about the study results, and I will update the council as things progress. We are in the process of putting together a new fixed route that will provide service to the Park 48 area outside of the city. One of the restrictions that we are up against, if you recall, this council passed an ordinance, 2315, allowing Bloomington Transit to operate outside the city limits. Section 3 of that ordinance does require that any service operated outside of the city be funded equitably. So in other words, to protect the taxpayers. So currently, the funding mechanism that's in place, Bloomington Transit has its own taxing authority within the city limits, and since the interlocal agreement was reached, we do receive funding from the city of Bloomington. But we don't receive any funding from any other source locally. So in order to accomplish that goal of getting that route in place, we're going to be looking at avenues for outside funding to support it. The second big project was microtransit. We began offering microtrans services a couple of years ago, about a year and a half ago, with our BT late-night program. So from 9:00 PM to 11:59 PM, if you need a transportation in the designated area, you can download a voucher through Uber or Lyft, and we will subsidize your travel expense up to $12. We're moving forward with a new hybrid microtransit program in which we will be using BT vehicles and BT employees, and that will be supplemented along with TNCs. So if we get to demand situations where capacity becomes a concern, the users will have the opportunity to select a TNC in lieu of a Bloomington Transit vehicle. And we do have the operating platform in place. It'll be app-based. The nice thing about the operating platform, not only will it be used for the microtransit, but it will also be used for our BT access program. So we'll be able to co-mingle trips. So if we have a BT access vehicle in an area that a person is requesting a ride, and they're non-ADA, we could still be able to provide that trip the most efficient way possible by using the vehicle that's closest to the location. So we're excited about that. We plan to launch the microtransit hybrid program in July, and it's branded as Blink, B-Link, so Blink. Clever. The service frequency improvements. We all know that transit becomes much more attractive when the frequency of the service increases, and in order for us to do that, we need additional vehicles. We established a transition, battery electric transition plan, and our goal is to transition our fleet, 60% of our fleet to battery electric by 2030, and 100% by 2050. We do have 16 buses, battery electric buses, on order. Four are scheduled to be delivered later this fall, and the remaining 12 will be delivered in 2025. The local funding, local match for those buses, we use the ED Lit Funds. The fourth project was Sunday service. We launched Sunday service in March 23. That's an ongoing. Ridership has increased. Currently, it's outperforming our Saturday ridership in terms of passenger trips per hour and passenger trips per mile. The fare subsidy program was another project that the council felt was important. This year, we have $75,000 budgeted for fare subsidies. We have over 40 agencies eligible for half-fare passes. What we're excited about is, we had our kickoff meeting this morning, or this afternoon, actually, with our electronic fare collection company, or Cubic is the name of the company, and we're going to be transitioning by the end of the year to electronic payments. And what this will allow us to do is we can cap fares. So if an individual, for example, currently doesn't have the financial wherewithal to buy a monthly pass at $30, and they ride every day, and have to pay $2 each way, by day 16, you know, they're losing money because they couldn't afford the discounted pass. So with electronic fare collection equipment, that individual will be identified as reaching their cap, and they'll ride for free. More importantly, what it'll do is allow agencies to issue vouchers directly to clients. So we can work with different agencies so they can print vouchers from a computer printer, and then we will bill them. It'll streamline the collection of fares all the way around. You know, every day we have to count cash fares. You know, we're still going to accept cash fares, but we anticipate it's going to be a, you know, very, very limited amount of cash being collected. Everything else will be app-based, so you can pay your fares through your smartphone technology. Retailers, like CVS, for example, they're in the system where you can purchase Ride Media. And like I said, we're hoping to have that implemented by the end of the year. Now, with all that being said, we do have this ambitious plan for growth, additional vehicles, and quite frankly, we're running out of space, or we have run out of space at the Grimes Lane facility. So we do have money in place this year for land acquisition. We are using a significant portion of lit funding for that, as well as some FTA 5307 money and some of our surplus funds, local surplus funds. Our plan this year is to submit a application to the Federal Transit Administration for $35 million project, and that project would be for the design and construction of a new facility. And in order to strengthen our chances for an award, what we'd like to do is identify $3.5 million of the calendar year '25 and calendar year '26 ED Lit Funds as matching funds. So what I would appreciate from the council is a letter of support that we can include with our application. And, you know, we feel pretty confident that we need to do this now before there's potentially a change in the political landscape. The money is there currently. We don't know if it's going to be appropriated the following year, so we feel it's, time is of the essence. So we want to get this application moving this year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Connell. Questions when we ask them? My first. Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Mr. Connell, for that presentation. I think that this application is an excellent candidate for ED Lit Funds. I'm curious about the criteria for land acquisition. Are you looking at something proximate to the existing facility in Grimes Lane? Are you, or is it, are there certain requirements in terms of?
So there are requirements. We did hire a consulting firm, Hanson Professional Group out of Indianapolis. They've been working with us to identify suitable parcels, and when we say suitable, we're taking into consideration utility infrastructure, particularly electric infrastructure, location. You know, we have to account for deadhead miles, and so the facility needs to be centrally located to reduce for efficiency. But we've requested that they stay within the urbanized area, because this facility, when we build it, it's not for 10 years from now. It should be designed for 50 years from now. And that's what we're tasked the consultant with. We have an idea of how many acres we need. We'd like to have some extra acreage for potentially maybe a solar farm, you know, things of that nature. This will be a state-of-the-art facility.
Is, would you relocate all the facilities there, or would this be a, would you, what would you use the Grimes location for if you were to acquire?
We're still in discussions regarding what the purpose of that facility would be, but we would like to see all operations move to the new facility eventually.
Thank you.
We do have a lease between Indiana University and BPTC. There was some suggestion of potentially using that facility for our microtransit operations until that lease expires, but those are all things that are still under consideration.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Connell? Councilmember Stossberg?
Hi, thank you for coming tonight. Can you tell us a little bit about how the electric buses have been going? And I'm especially interested in terms of like maintenance and whether your usual maintenance staff have successfully managed whatever problems they've been having, and whether they have had more or fewer problems than your traditional buses have had. Thank you.
So in the beginning, we had, it was a nightmare, quite frankly, and it was new technology. I think the two buses that were delivered, they were 12th and 13th off the production line from the Gillick facility. And it took about a year for us to really get things turned around. And to their credit, they came in and we got things straightened out. Now, with that being said, there are still some limitations when you have extremely cool weather, cold weather, like we've had. We have an open-air facility, storage facility. Battery, electric buses, vehicles, they don't like the cold. Unfortunately, when we looked at our existing facility, one of the considerations was, do we stay there? And it would have been the path of least resistance, but it's in a floodplain, and in closing that facility just wasn't going to be feasible. So we do want a closed facility for bus storage for climate control reasons. And there's a variety of other reasons. You know, even with diesel buses, when it gets extremely cold, you have problems. So if we were in Florida, open-air facility, probably not a big deal. Here, we do have those cold snaps, and it can be problematic. As far as the maintenance, things are going pretty well. We do have some range issues. So if you look at our transition plan, we said 60% by 2030. That was after a study was conducted, and you look at our existing schedules, so 60% of what we call are blocks, where a bus goes out before it has to come back in, electric bus can satisfy that block. Okay? The goal is, as we transition to later years, like this next batch of buses that come in, the range is going to be roughly 30% higher than what we have currently, just from the short period of time between that delivery and this delivery, a few years, the technology, the battery technology has improved. So, but so far, we're pretty happy with them.
Yes, Councilmember Assari?
Mr. Connell, for all the work that you do and your partnership. And at the end of last council session, I think in June, there was a resolution passed around this idea of a circulator bus downtown. And I know that, you know, since then, there's been lots of turnover, et cetera, but I'm curious if, what the status of those discussions or any planning that's happened in that space? And then the follow-up question would be whether further action would be required if we wanted to sort of reengage with that idea, whether further action would be required by the council?
Yeah, it's definitely on our radar, particularly with the discussions of the Convention Center expansion. We think there is some merit to a route circulating downtown. So it's still on our radar. Like anything else, it takes money to operate a service. We do feel that it could be a very viable project. And if we have funding left from the study that we're doing for the BRT project, we plan to redirect some of those funds to take a closer look at what the options would be there.
May I ask my follow-up again? And is there any action, I mean, other, so the action specifically that you would have us to take if we wanted to reengage that conversation is to work with the mayor to find funds for it?
Yes, that would definitely be necessary. Anytime we look at new service, we want to make sure whatever we roll out is going to be successful, that it's going to be needed, it's going to be used. So that would be the first step. From that point, we would develop cost estimates, and then from there, it'd be determining how it's going to be funded.
Okay. And is the original cost estimate was like $5 million or something like that for a pilot? Is that, was that just a?
It varied based on the level of service that we were looking at. Obviously, the more frequent the service, the more vehicles, the more labor, the more expense.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Zulik?
Questions on the late-night program? Attorney Lucas, could you please pull up the document again? Thank you. Do you have any statistics on like the demographics of people who are using that program?
We can identify how many individual users. I can tell you this, we see an increase in the amount of vouchers used when I use in session as opposed to when it's not in session, which would, you know, deduce that most likely a lot of students are using, taking advantage of the service. So as far as, we get individual IDs, we can track, you know, pickup, drop-offs, all of that, but there is some information that's, you know, confidential. We don't receive names. We have, you create a user ID, but really doesn't give us any information other than that. But I would suspect a large portion of the users are university-related.
Madam President, may I please ask a follow-up question? Yes. Okay. Wow, it just left my head. Sorry. Thank you. Councilmember Rallo will ask a question in my stead. Okay. One moment.
Is Councilmember Rallo already asked a question? So, and it's just left my head as well. I think we're having collective. Oh, yes, how is it going to hire drivers? I know that was proving difficult.
It's gotten better. It's gotten a lot better. We're still not quite where we need to be. You know, we've, we'll hire a couple of good candidates, and then we lose a couple. You know, it's treading water at some point, but we have seen an increase in the number of applicants. You know, I've said this before, the challenges we face, it's, when we conduct exit interviews, it's not an economic issue. It's a lifestyle issue. You know, we have really crazy schedules, and it's a union environment. So when you come in, you know, nothing wrong with the union, but when you're the new person and everything's seniority-based, you're at the bottom of the list, and you get some of the toughest assignments and some of the toughest shifts. So, you know, we tell people, you know, year two is exponentially better than year one because you've moved up enough to have a little more selection in your schedules, and that's really our greatest challenge. In the maintenance department as well. You know, it's basically a 24-hour operation, and we need someone to work a midnight shift. And we finally found a good candidate, a qualified mechanic, that was willing to do that, but it took us a year and a half. But it took us a year and a half.
Thank you. Councilmember Zulich, have you thought of your follow-up?
Yes, I actually thought of two.
Okay. Go ahead with your follow-up question, but I, I do want to caution that we are almost at 20 minutes, and we have two more reports. So go ahead with the follow-up.
I'll ask my more pressing question. Has there been any attempt to coordinate with Indiana University for extension of services onto campus for the late-night program?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Rallo, did you have another question?
Yes, just wondered. Has the, have you buses cut fuel use, or are you using approximately the same volume as you were before because of expansion of services?
Well, definitely, you know, those, those vehicles use zero fuel. But we have resumed to higher levels of service because, you know, we're seeing higher ridership levels. So we actually are sending out what we call the backup buses. So one of the things about, let me just throw this out here real quick while we're talking about it. But another justification for a new facility is, we really could use some 60-foot articulated buses, because currently we have situations where we are at capacity, and our only recourse is to send another bus with another driver to pick up the overflow. So you're basically doubling your costs. So with a 60-foot height articulated bus, you could, the operating expense would be basically cut in half. But you need a facility that can accommodate a 60-foot bus to work on it, maintenance.
Is fuel use flat, or is it increasing, decreasing?
I can get, I can get you that information. I don't, I didn't, I don't have that.
Okay, great. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Connell. I understand you would like a letter of support for the grant. So if you could email the council office with that information?
I definitely will, and I appreciate your support.
And also if we could have a copy of the slides, if we don't already. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I would like to extend the time for reports from the mayor and city offices by 15 minutes, unless there's any objection from colleagues. Okay. So let's try to conclude by 7:21. Next, we have Clerk Nicole Bolden.
Welcome. Appreciate any updates you can provide.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Clerk Nicole Bolden. For those of you who may be visually impaired, I am a brown-skinned black woman with my hair in a ponytail and I think a tan-colored turtleneck sweater. So I wanted to give you all a few updates from the clerk's office. To begin with, if we go to the next slide, actually, no, really, to begin with, welcome, Councilmember Daley. Now, for boards and commissions, you all have been working diligently this year. You have about 21 seats left to fill. As you can see, Team C met this evening, so I believe they'll have some recommendations coming back when we come back to council in the next regular session. And Team B will also be meeting, I can't tell the dates, that's later this week. So there's that. And next, I wanted to talk to you about certifications. And I have spoken to the council in the past about certifications for the clerk's office, usually in the context of our budget presentations, and I had hoped to take a little bit more time to tell you more about them. The Indiana League of Municipal Clerks and Treasurers is one of the two organizations that grant certifications to clerks. The Clerk League was founded in the 1930s to promote the best methods for conducting the affairs of elected offices, to offer educational information for the growth and advancement of clerks and clerk treasurers, and to work with the state legislature in enacting laws for the betterment of state and local government. Just as a fun fact, the second president of the Clerk's League was Mary Alice Dunlap. So just one thing I stumbled across, and I'm trying like heck to find it again, but it was in the clerk's records and not our records here in the city. The reason I'm talking about certifications this evening is, is also partly because it takes a lot of work to get a certification for the clerks. You have to have points that are accrued through experience, which includes a letter of sponsorship from a clerk member in the league, a letter of support from your clerk, if you're a deputy clerk. You need your work experience that counts as points, membership in the Clerk's League, and you have to attend at least two district meetings before you can achieve it. In addition, in terms of education, you can include your bachelor's degree or any graduate degrees you have, if they're in a related field. You have to attend State Board of Accounts meetings, and you have to attend annual conferences. And to top it all off, you have to attend the Institute and Academy, which is where the clerk's office will be while over, after spring break. All in all, the process is lengthy. To achieve your Indiana-accredited municipal clerk status, you have to be working diligently for at least two years before you can achieve that. The recommendations for all of the other certifications are the same. Some of them require a little bit more work. And those classes include a variety of topics, including best practices for record retention, minutes, working with your counsel, human resources development and processes in your office, diversity, equity, and inclusion classes, and others. The list is amazing when you start going into all the classes offered. And this evening, I would like to announce, both in my capacity as city clerk of Bloomington, but also as the vice president of the Clerk's League, that we recently had a certification that came near and dear to our hearts and offices, which is Chief Deputy Clerk Sophia McDowell achieved her Indiana-accredited municipal clerk status. So I'd like to take a moment to applaud Sophia. I think she may still be on the meeting this evening, she logged in earlier. So I wanted to make sure and publicly congratulate her. And hopefully, I will be back very soon to congratulate some of the other deputy clerks in the office. They've been working very hard for the last couple of years to achieve this goal. And last, it's Women's History Month, so hooray for women. The Women's History Month luncheon is coming up on March 28th. You can get your tickets at the Buzzkirk Chumley Theater. Details are there. And because last time I said we should not just perform, we should actually inform, I included a few picks that I have to read, watch, or listen to on the next slide. And there's "The Vice President's Black Wife" by Dr. Amrita Chakrabarti Myers, "The Woman King," which you can watch on most services that are streaming, and badass, "Tales of Resilience," which, as a podcast, has hosted some of our local people, and it's hosted by a local person and has featured some of our local officials, including school board member April Hennessy and county council member and deputy clerk Jennifer Crossley. So I highly recommend that you listen to them. They are fascinating. And that is what I have for you this evening. If you have any questions, please let me know. I'll wait for a minute. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Clerk Bolden. Are there any questions from council members? Yes, Councilmember Osari?
Just an acknowledgement that in, in all of that presentation, that we are very grateful to have such a qualified and outstanding clerk. And we should take the opportunity to say it regularly in official capacity. So just thank you for everything that you and your office do.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Clerk Bolden, and, and thank you also for, for nurturing the careers of our deputy clerks and letting them go to all the training and all that.
Yeah.
Much appreciated.
They're absolutely wonderful. So thank you.
All right. Next, we have Mayor Thompson, I think has a few updates for us as well.
Good evening, and first things first, welcome, Councilwoman Daley. We're pleased to have a full council here in chambers tonight. Wanted to let everybody know that the first official traveling town hall is going to happen on March 18th at Summit Elementary School. I will be there, co-hosted by Isabel Piedmont Smith, because it is Councilwoman Piedmont Smith's district. Everybody's welcome to come. We are taking topic suggestions in, through an online forum. So if members of the public have things that they particularly want to talk about, we will be inviting staff in case we get in-depth with any of the particular topics. We did hold a press conference earlier today in collaboration with the county, the university, and other partners on Public Safety for the Eclipse, which, as we know, is happening April 8th. We're really excited about it and really proud of the unified team that has been working for three years now to put together public safety plans to be the most hospitable place in the path of totality. I wanted to make the council aware that last year, the Board of Public Safety did approve a pilot program for the use of tasers in our police force. And we have started receiving those. They're not, the, the training hasn't happened, so they're not out on the streets yet. But the pilot is for a one-year program, and we will have a minimum of 40 tasers with the police force. We are the only law enforcement agency in the county that doesn't already use them. So these are already out on the streets. Let's see. Hopewell Advisory Team is being led by Director Jane Cooper-Smith, and my thanks to council members Stossberg and Flaherty for serving on that. We are making some progress with that team in ensuring that we are targeting the right kind of housing and, and that we are looking at all the incentives that we possibly can to get Hopewell done well. And then finally, really happy to announce that David Hiddle is, has accepted the position of the Director of Planning and Transportation for the city. And he, he comes with years of experience, most recently Tippecook, Canoe County, but also has worked in Johnson County. And he is going to come greet our planning staff in person on Friday. This, of course, is contingent on final approval by the Plan Commission after his appointment date on April 1st. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Are there any questions from council members? Councilmember Stossberg?
Hi. Thank you for coming tonight, and I just want to point out that you're walking on your own two feet this evening, and that's great.
Perhaps not with doctor's approval, but I'm. Thank you.
Councilmember Osari?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. I've heard some, it was like a cup, a month ago or so, that you gave a speech on your 100-day plan. And it occurred to me at some point today that, that you'd never sent it to us. And I would love, I would love to see a copy of it so that we can, you know, best align efforts in support of the things that the executive branch is doing. And, you know, to cause as many roadblocks as, I'm joking, but, no, but honestly, to support the efforts of, of, of the executive branch. So if you, if you have that in writing, or if you would like to come and give that speech to us two months later, we'd, we'd be happy to receive it.
Yes. I don't recall giving a speech about it, but it is an outline, it's, it's not a formal document, it's a, it's an outline of what we hope to get accomplished. And of course, we are, you know, less than 40 days away from, from that 100-day mark. That 100-day mark lands on April 9th, which I'll take this opportunity to say is the state of the city. We set it at that date intentionally, not to be eclipsed by another major event. But I'm, I'm happy to share the outline. It's, you know, it's the three major commitments from my campaign surrounding open and inclusive government, housing plan, and substance use and mental health initiatives, as well as onboarding the team and doing some various assessments and audits, which we have been announcing as we have initiated them.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mayor Thompson? I have one, since you mentioned audits. I know that last fall, you had talked about doing a financial audit of the city. Is that underway?
Yes, it is. So we have three financial audits actually underway, two that had not, had not been done yet, as well as another one. And we're doing a full audit of financial, financial processes in the city as well, to make sure that we are compliant with what is already, already on the books and code, but also to ensure that we are really achieving best practice.
When do you expect the results of those?
I can get back to you on that. We, we just submitted our report to the State Board of Accounts last week, and, you know, we've engaged on these audits, but I'm not sure when they're due. One of them that I asked about last week is, won't be done until September. I would like to talk about the budget process well before that. But I think, you know, as, as we dig into the finances, we're, we're learning more and more about what we have and what we don't have. But those audits really set the level point for us and help us understand various encumbrances and, and commitments that may not otherwise be apparent.
Great. Well, we, I'm sure I speak for all of us that we look forward to a report on, on those results.
Of course, of course. I'll, I'll send somebody more qualified than me to give that report. Jessica, I'm sure will be happy to do that.
All right. If there are no other questions, we can move on. Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Now we come to reports from council committees. Are there any reports this evening? I don't see any. So we will move on to our first period of public comment. So this is comments on items that are not on the agenda this evening. We have 20 minutes for this part of the agenda. May I see a show of hands in the council chambers of how many people would like to speak? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So we have nine here. Mr. Lucas, could you please make the announcement via Zoom and see how many we have there?
Yes. If folks on Zoom would like to comment, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can find that raise hand button under your control bar by clicking on the reactions tab or the more tab. If you can't locate it, please send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak. And I do see one hand raised at the moment.
All right. So that's 10 people. So I will need to put a timeline of two minutes per person at this point. And you'll have a timer on the screen. So the first person here in chambers, please come on up. And to make this more efficient, maybe people can start lining up while the first person is speaking. And I think there's a sign-up sheet at the podium for the clerk to get your name as well.
Is that what you have? Eric Spoonmore.
Go ahead.
President of Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Big welcome to Councilmember Courtney Daley. Congratulations on your election. I had a lot more to say about that, but we've only got two minutes here, so I'll move on to, to the next items. I, I want to make you all aware of an announcement here. Let everybody in the community know, and especially to our city leaders, about an upcoming event that will be held by Nichelle Wash of the Garden Group. This event is being billed as a convening for Inclusive Advantage. And so the idea behind this important event is to build a comprehensive, community-wide diversity, equity, and inclusion strategy that fosters an environment where all who call Monroe County home can have the opportunity to achieve success. So I'm sure many of you know that Nichelle and her team have done a huge amount of excellent DEI work in our community and throughout the state. I know a lot of you know her personally, and so you'll appreciate that this is an important event that we're all very excited about. In addition to being one of our great members of the Chamber of Commerce, Nichelle also serves on the Monroe County Women's Commission. She's a board member and strong advocate for the CASA organization. The Chamber of Commerce alongside the Community Foundation, Cook Medical, and the Indiana Youth Institute, host, are hosting partners on this event. We invite you all to be there on March 19th from 11:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. with many of our community leaders and partners in attendance. The convening for Inclusive Advantage will provide The convening for Inclusive Advantage will provide an opportunity for community organizations to convene with others working on and across respective sectors with the ultimate goal of advancing practices that engage all community voices to ensure all have access to community resources. In short, this initiative will provide space for community organizations to discuss how we can best ensure everyone in Monroe County, from all backgrounds, can achieve their full potential. Had a lot more to say about that, but thanks for the time tonight. And also, thanks to you all for the vote on the interlocal agreement for the convention center expansion. We're really excited about that.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have up to two minutes.
Hello. My name is Louise Lessinger, and I am here to speak against the ceasefire resolution that was proposed by a group of citizens last week. I believe this group is motivated by the tragic images of war that are broadcast daily without sufficient context or depth by national and international media, as well as by social media. Of course, war is horrible, and innocent people in combat zones do suffer. But it is important to remember who is responsible for the current war and acknowledge the right of Israel to defend itself. Let us remember that Hamas is a terrorist organization whose goal is to create an Islamic state in place of Israel. It is part of the global jihad movement that brought us 9/11. Its totalitarian rule over Gaza for almost two decades has not brought prosperity to its own people despite millions of dollars in international aid. We should be asking why. Israel has never initiated war with its hostile neighbors, but it has responded to their multiple declarations of war and the ongoing terrorist attacks by these countries and their proxies, as it is doing now in response to the horrors of October 7th. Yet the resolution seems to focus on Israel for condemnation. Israel is not perfect. It is a messy democracy, just like the United States. But it is the only democracy in the Middle East, and it is surrounded by hostile totalitarian countries and territories, and it deserves our support as a democracy. So I ask you, as our elected officials, to reject the ceasefire petition or any petition of its kind, which implicitly condemns Israel for defending its own citizens and trying to free the people of Gaza from the brutality of Hamas.
That's the end of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ralph Gabler.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't hear you.
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Ralph Gabler.
Thank you.
I would like to offer several comments concerning the council's consideration of an Israel-Hamas ceasefire resolution. If the council proceeds to consider a resolution, it should acknowledge the following points. One, Israel is engaged in a war of self-defense since it was the target of a violent terrorist attack on October 7th that was unparalleled in its violence and undertaken with the explicit intent to annihilate as many Jews as possible and to terminate the Jewish state of Israel. Any nation attacked in such a manner is justified in going to war in self-defense, especially in this case, since the leaders of Hamas have publicly promised to undertake additional terrorist attacks in the future. Two, Israel is not engaged in genocide in the Gaza Strip. Genocide involves the intentional destruction of a people, in part or in whole, based on national, ethnic, racial, or religious grounds. This definition does not apply to actions taken by Israel in its war of self-defense. One must acknowledge and mourn the tremendous loss of life that has resulted from this conflict. But the casualties are not the result of genocidal intent or action. In fact, Israel has made extraordinary efforts to limit noncombatant casualties consistent with achieving its legitimate war aims. To a large extent, the extraordinary scope of casualties has resulted from the policy of Hamas, which confiscates for its own terrorist purposes, resources provided by the international community, including Israel, for the benefit of the inhabitants of the Gaza Strip, and uses the people it allegedly represents as human shields and tools of international propaganda. Three, Hamas is a terrorist organization that serves as a proxy of Iran in a war of global jihad. It is fully and directly responsible for the horrific events of October 7th. It is illegitimate as a government because it is not democratically accountable to any constituency.
So that is the end of your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Zoney. Any decent human being cannot but be deeply pained by the terrible suffering of innocent Palestinian children and adults in Gaza. Thus, almost any decent person, which I imagine includes everyone in this chamber, might favor a ceasefire in Gaza, although we might strongly disagree on what type of ceasefire. But the question is, is this an issue on which you, the council, should take a stand? I would argue that it is not, that we are talking about a conflict 8,000 miles away from here, and one on which the residents, almost none of the residents of this city, have sufficient deep geopolitical, military, diplomatic, and even religious knowledge to deeply analyze the situation and suggest a way forward. If, however, you do choose to consider and pass a resolution, I urge you strongly not to pass one that calls for an unconditional ceasefire. Such a call would be a lose-lose-lose-lose situation. It would be a loss for Israel, which would see kept in power a regime that cold-bloodedly murdered, mutilated, and raped Israeli civilians on October 7th. It would be a lose-lose for the Palestinians, maintaining in power a reactionary, theocratic, violent, corrupt, misogynistic, and homophobic group that since 2007 has stolen, has used millions for military tunnels, not for the public welfare. It would be a loss for the United States, which, under Democratic and Republican presidents alike, has declared Hamas a terrorist threat. And it would be a loss to our beloved city. It would prove divisive and antagonize many Jews...
That is the end of your time, sir.
And just let me finish this sentence, Madam President. Many Jews and non-Jews as well. So thank you very much.
After thinking about this resolution about a ceasefire and reading about these resolutions being proposed in cities and towns across the United States, I've decided to ask the council to not consider this resolution. It supports H.R. 786 in the federal government, which calls on President Biden to call for a ceasefire in Israel and the Palestinian territories. The resolution makes no sense the way it is worded, and we know that Biden has sway over the Israeli government, but not the Gazan government. Therefore, it essentially calls for a withdrawal of Israeli troops and demands nothing of Hamas. This does not lead to a cessation of hostilities, only the opportunity for Hamas and Palestinian Islamic Jihad to refresh. I remind you that there was a ceasefire in place on October 7th when the massacre happened, and there was a ceasefire in place for much of the last 20 years, when Hamas and Palestinian Islamic Jihad fired thousands and thousands of rockets, flaming kites, and sent suicide bombers into Israel. You may know that ceasefire negotiations have been going on for months, since the last one in November, and Hamas keeps rejecting deals. Of course, everyone wants peace. This war can end tonight if a few Hamas leaders leave Gaza with their hands up, and they and the Palestinian Islamic Jihad turn in their weapons. Whatever we say in Bloomington, Indiana is not going to convince Hamas to do that. The Bloomington Peace Action Coalition knows this, too. Furthermore, they have already stated that this resolution is the first step. It paves the way for a BDS resolution. BDS does not help the Palestinians in any way. It is aimed at hurting Israel, just as the Arab boycott has done since 1938. I am also pro-Palestinian, and anyone who cares about the quality of Palestinian lives should be calling on Hamas and on war all these years to provide services and a functioning society, rather than blaming everything on Israel. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gail Nichols. Thank you for providing this opportunity for me and others to speak to you this evening. I've lived in Bloomington for more than 32 years, and for as long as I've lived here, I have felt Bloomington to be a city that prides itself on being a welcoming place for people with a whole range of backgrounds and perspectives. In fact, the city's website says the following. Quote, "Bloomington's admittedly unique character welcomes all to participate in community building. Our friendly, safe, and inviting environment embraces visitors and ideas from across the globe." Goes on to say, "Whether you come for school business pleasure or would like to make this your home, you are welcome in Bloomington." The resolution currently being considered by the city council, calling for a ceasefire in Gaza, is both beyond the purview of the city council and contrary to the vision of Bloomington expressed on our website. A resolution from the City Council of Bloomington, Indiana, will have no impact on the actual ceasefire negotiations between Israel and Hamas, and it will sow antisemitism, racism, and divisiveness within our city. Reports by the Jewish Federations of North America suggest that this resolution will instill fear in and cause harm to our residents, and will result in Bloomington's becoming the opposite of the, quote, "friendly, safe, and inviting environment" that it has been. I'm sure that this is not what you intend, and it's not what any of us wants. I ask each of you to keep before you both the primary aim of the city council, which is to foster the health, safety, and welfare of our city, and the ideal of Bloomington as an open and welcoming home for all of us. I urge you to table this resolution. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here. My name is Günther Yekeli, and I came here almost eight years ago with my wife. We were before coming to Bloomington. We were in Germany, in France, in Britain, and we found a really lovely home here, and we hope that we can stay longer. I am here today because I watched the video from last week, and I was alarmed, because this is what I saw. I saw an activist, loud group of people, well-organized, trying to push a divisive agenda onto this council here. And this is something that I have witnessed 20 years ago in different European places. And this is on this, on the controversial topic of Israel. And then when Israel is demonized, you can quickly come into a situation where you exclude many people who do not feel the same way. And often, this is a silent majority. So when I saw this, I found it alarming, and I hope that this will not take hold in this town, so that it can be an inclusive, or can stay an inclusive, town. That's my personal experience from the beginning, and that's what we heard from the first speaker here tonight, that there are many projects in that sense. But I fear that if you pass this resolution, that there will be more division coming up. And of course, many Jewish committee members will feel excluded, but not only Jewish committee members, also those who have some sympathy with Israel, who do not share this demonization of Israel. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Steve Wolin. I'm here not to speak to a resolution that doesn't actually exist yet. It's not before the council. I'm here to speak to a resolution that I authored last year that might answer a question that just came up. It's about a downtown circulator. I would urge you to look up the details for Resolution 2310, and you'll find complete details for the proposal for a circulator. And I'll just give you a few brief points from the memo I wrote about it. One-time capital cost would be approximately 4.1 to 4.5 million to purchase three battery-electric buses that would be able to provide service to the downtown area between sample gates, the courthouse, the Trade District, and Seminary Square. The annual operating cost would depend on how much service we want to be run, but 20-minute service on that route during regular business hours would be approximately $416,000 a year. If you were to extend it to Saturdays and to 8:00 p.m., since Bloomington's downtown is very lively, it would be more like $750,000. If you were to extend service all the way to 3:00 a.m., it would be just under $1 million a year. The initial funding idea was that there's still at least $5 million left in the money that used to be in the Industrial Development Fund, aka the Creed District money. That money is still there, has not been spent. That would fund the purchase of buses, the 16 shelters that would go with it, and fund a year's worth of service. Finally, one method of several that could be used to fund it in the future would be to right-price metered parking, that if we were to do so, it would fund the service at that rate. Please look at all the information. It's in the packet that went with that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? We are heading up on the 20-minute mark, but I would like to extend for a few minutes if there's no opposition from council members. I think we have one person online, and obviously, we have one more person here in chambers. So go ahead. You'll have up to two minutes.
I noticed that the BPD is getting tasers. I heard the mayor say that tonight. And I want to remind the people that are old enough to remember, and inform the people who are too young, that James Borden was killed with a taser on the intake portion of the Monroe County jail because he was, because of the way he was treated, with a With a taser, you have the option to control another person. It's like being able to torture somebody. And the boys upstairs, the guards, were doing ninja extractions where they dress in black so nobody knows who they are, and then they extract people from the cells up there. And that was going on before Sharp put an end to it, after they killed Borden. Now, these tasers give you the ability, as an officer, to exact compliance, or the alternative is great pain and loss of bodily function. So think about what you're doing when you're introducing, giving these cops more weapons that are potentially lethal. The other thing is, I'm a veteran. I was sent to Vietnam from here in 1968 with the Marines. I was sent by my churches. I was sent by the parents in this community. I was sent by the school system. And what they told me was, even though I was going over there and might get killed with my friends and all that, that afterwards, I'd have health care. I want dental. I want dental for veterans. We deserve our teeth, and we didn't go to fight for those assholes in Washington. We went there for you. And so I want a resolution from this council, and I want it to the VA.
Mr. Hagerty, your time is up.
Oh, well, that's fairly normal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have any commenters online?
Yes, Phil just wanted to know, Dave Huber?
Hello. I have some slides, if those could be shared. Thank you, council, for everything you do for the city. I really admire all of you and the public service that you do. I have relocated back to Bloomington from Austin, Texas. I went to the Kelly School of Business and Luddy, and now I lead design practices at IBM, where we prevent the risk of making the wrong thing and try to make great software and user experiences for people. And I can't help but bring... and user experiences for people, and I can't help but bring that point of view to this great new opportunity here at Hopewell. And I know a lot of people have put a lot of work in making this amazing project come to life, super excited about it, and wanted to share a point of view on how we can maybe make it even better. If you go to the next slide, please. I did a deep dive in one of the more recent plans for it. This is Hopewell West, and from my point of view, and I shared a kind of petition with some friends that ended up circulating, we had 116 people sign it over the weekend, and I think that was shared out in the packet, putting a large road, and that's, you know, perspective, but a road with cars kind of in our pedestrian plaza, to me seems to be undermining some of the larger goals for the project. The next slide, please. Simply because having a road, you know, as a place to play, really isn't that great. We've become accustomed to it, but I think we can do better. Next slide, please. I was looking at what downtown Brooklyn's doing, I was there for a workshop a few months ago, and they're going through a big renovation. Next slide. What they're currently proposing was, what they have was similar to what we're proposing, and they're doing something even more progressive, as you see here. Next slide, please. Here's an alley. Next slide. And it's heavily focused on pedestrian life, and I think that can bring us some thriving ways of living for people. I won't have time to get through all of this, but I sent forward in the packet and just wanted to bring the voice of these 116 other Bloomingtonians to the chamber here tonight to say, we're excited about Hopewell, and it would be nice to do some final small tweaks and iterations to Hopewell West to make it even more exciting as a place to make Bloomington on the national map as a place that's making spectacular spaces. Thank you.
Mr. Lucas, is there anybody else online?
No, not that I see.
All right, thank you. We will move to appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any appointments, any nominations tonight? All right, we don't have any this evening. Then we will move on to legislation for second readings and resolutions. Oh, Mr. Lucas.
Did you intend to make any?
Oh, I'm sorry. I myself have appointments to boards and commissions. As we have a new council member, I would like to appoint Councilmember Daley to interview Team B and to the Jack Hopkins Social Service Funding Committee. So, welcome once again, and here's some more work for you today. Thank you for, for your service on those. Now we can go to resolutions.
I move that Resolution 2024-04 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
A resolution opposing the LEAP Pipeline Water Diversion Project. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution is sponsored by Councilmember Ruff. It expresses the common council's opposition to the Indiana Economic Development Corporation's proposed limitless exploration-advanced-paced innovation district project that would divert water from the Wabash River aquifer and Ortiz River aquifer, which may impact Hoosiers who rely on these aquifers for their water supply. This resolution also directs the city clerk to send copies of the resolution to the Indiana General Assembly, Indiana Economic Development Corporation, the Indiana Finance Authority, the Indiana Secretary of Commerce, and Indiana Governor, Governor Eric Holcomb.
I move that Resolution 2024-04 be adopted.
All right, very good. Councilmember Ruff, as sponsor of this resolution, would you like to make a presentation?
First of all, I'd like to add that Councilmember Rallo, late this afternoon, contacted me and asked if he could be listed as a co-sponsor, so it was too late to be put in any, in any formal form, but I wanted to make a note of that. I'll just make some very brief opening comments before, as the council entertained last week with the Adeem Wilderness Resolution situation and resolution, then I'll invite a few individuals to contribute their knowledge and experience to the introductory comments for this resolution, like, similar to we did, how we did last week with the Adeem Wilderness Resolution. So, very briefly, what is, what is LEAP? It's a, it's a massive, largely speculative economic development project, sort of spearheaded by the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, and being planned and developed in relative secrecy. I think that's generally accepted as, as kind, as an issue in and of itself, but with the hope of attracting some large, really water-intensive industries to a location in Boone County, that nine, nine to 10,000 acres, I believe that they're referring to as the LEAP District, LEAP Innovation District, but that doesn't have access to anywhere near the amount of water that the massive development in these water-intensive industries would need. Now, I will note, as an aside, that Lilly, Eli Lilly's, already has a part of the area and facilities going up there, and that has an associated water plan with that, with the Lilly Development, that's not part of the LEAP Pipeline that this resolution tonight primarily deals with. But just this past summer, it became public that the, that a plan was being developed to divert and pipe up to, up to 100 million gallons per day from aquifers in Tippecanoe County. And it immediately reminded me of the serious proposal around 20 years ago, I'm not sure exactly how many years ago, but around 20, I believe, to pipe a similar large amount of water from Lake Monroe here in Monroe County, 60 miles north to the Indianapolis area. And unbeknownst to me, when I first approached council staff about doing a resolution along these lines, I found that Councilmember Volin, former Councilmember Volin, former Councilmember Volin had started a similar initiative about this project last fall, but the term just ran out of time. It was, we're unable to complete and either bring forward a resolution or a letter addressed to state agencies and the governor. So, it reminded me immediately of that, and prompted me to contact some folks in the affected areas and hear their experience and share ours. Though I do think the LEAP proposal is significantly more problematic, because aquifer sources of water make it much harder to assess the potential impacts on communities and farms and counties, because it's underground, and you can't really see how the effects, what, how much you actually have there, how the water moves, how the hydrology is, and what the impacts are going to be, as opposed to just calculating what you're going to take out of a lake. But it is extremely relevant to Bloomington, as the story of Bloomington and IU has been a story of water supply limitation. I think former Councilman, former Councilmember Volin will have a few words to say about that soon. But the purpose of the resolution is to help educate and inform our own community to show solidarity with our fellow Hoosier communities that are grappling with shared concerns about essential public resources that really need to be thoughtfully managed and protected rather than aggressively exploited for a speculative economic development like this. And finally, also to add to the chorus of voices of other Indiana communities, to try and influence our state government, to develop critically needed systematic and rational water policies, which are pretty much lacking right now. So with that, I would like to ask the council member at large from West Lafayette, Mr. David Sanders, who I believe we have with us by Zoom, I think David would have liked to have come in person, but wasn't, was unable to, 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 just to contribute to this introduction of this issue.
Councilor Ruff, I really want to thank you and the other members of the council for your actions today and for inviting me to participate. I would have enjoyed the opportunity of being there personally, but I had a commitment late in the afternoon that would have made that impossible. I just wanted to give a little history. In the beginning, in the spring of last year, was the first time I had learned about this project. I spoke with a number of people, what is it that we can do to protect our own resources? And I was told that there was really no role for city government in this. It was all going to be decided at the state level, and there was really nothing in which we could engage in order to stop it. So I accepted that answer for a while, but as I learned more and more about the project, the lack of accountability, the lack of planning, the vast cost of the project, and the potential deleterious economic and environmental effects on Tippecanoe County, I thought, no, I think that there is a role, and it's important for someone to speak out directly in opposition. Now, a number of the local politicians had asked for additional studies, had expressed their concerns, some of them had even mentioned, you know, their opposition, but I thought it was important to have a firm opposition. I mentioned that in my remarks at one particular city council meeting, and all of a sudden, I was receiving five or six emails every single day, or phone calls. What can I do? How can we oppose this? What action can we take? And I suggested the standard things, you know, contact your state legislators, become more informed about the issues. But as it continues, I thought, no, I think it's important for the council as a whole to make a statement. So I created a resolution, I was able to find somebody else to be a co-sponsor, it passed unanimously. I'll mention that, that didn't stop the emails and the phone calls, in fact, they accelerated. More people wanted to know what to do. And just as an aside, I will mention that because of that response, I wound up founding a, an organization called Stop the Water Steal. I didn't, that was the name voted on by the, by the assembly, to try to have an actual continuing organization to oppose this, this diversion of water. And we are talking about up to 100 million gallons a day, and we are talking about diversion not for human purposes, but for corporate purposes. And there were, the plans were all made in secret, and all sorts of things were already put into place. I'll just mention, as a taxpayer, the amount of money that's being paid for the land, they're paying three to 10 times the normal value of the farmland that they're taking for this project. And again, completely unaccountably, completely without any transparency. I am a college professor, so I can speak for 50 minutes without any interruption. I'm not going to do that today. I, I think I'll just stop there with one final comment. This is not a partisan issue. This has united people in Tippecanoe County and the region in a way that no other comparable issue has in decades. And it is not just our resolution, this resolution has been passed, a version of this resolution in 20 different local governments currently, because people understand that it isn't just an issue of the water resources in the aquifers that are in Tippecanoe County. This is a, an issue that affects all of us. Anyone with a water resource is potentially at risk if we don't take action now. So I would ask for your support for this resolution, and I'm willing later on to take any questions that you have. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanders, and we will definitely want you around for question and answer, I believe. And I'd like to ask, Mr. Lucas, is, is Mayor Grant from Attica still with us, or is he not?
I believe so.
Could you invite him to say a few words?
Should, should be able to go ahead and unmute if, if he would like. There he is.
Hello. I don't know how well you can see me here, but thank you for having me tonight, and thank you for putting on this, putting up this resolution. One of the things that come to mind, and I'll echo everything that...
Could you please uncapture your name? Could you please give your name again for our records?
My name's Larry Grant, I'm the mayor of Attica, Indiana.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'll echo what David Sanders said, but, you know, it kind of hit homes, hits home here in the Attica area, the, many of the cities and towns that were built along the Wabash River Valley, from Lafayette to West Lafayette, to Attica, to Cuyuga, to Terre Haute, all of those were built for a reason along the river, for natural resources. And we, we've had wells underneath the river for many, many years, that's where we get our water. We have no idea of what this project would do to our wells, and, you know, my big fear when I heard about this secondhand this summer was that, you know, we wake up someday and our wells are dry, and our, our reservoir is empty, and we can't fight fires, we can't even flush our toilets. So it, it really hit home in a hurry. So we quickly passed a resolution here in Attica, similar to the one that West Lafayette passed. I, I think that, that it should hit home with every city and town in the state of Indiana, just because it could happen to you, as, as Councilman Ruff pointed out with the Lake Monroe situation years ago. You just never know who's going to try to, to move water from one spot to another. I, I heard a comment, and I probably listened to more comments than I should, but I listened to a comment, and one of the officials said, well, you know, we should use that Wabash River water before it goes over into Illinois. And I don't know how many of you folks are geology people, but Wabash River doesn't run into Illinois. It, it runs along the border of Illinois when you get south of Terre Haute, but it never turns and goes into Illinois, so it's not like that water's heading over there anywhere. We're, we're using it along Indiana for its entirety, as, as long as it's flowing down along the, the Wabash River Valley. I won't take any more of your time, but I appreciate you taking up this resolution and helping out with the fight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Grant. And then finally, I would like to just give Councilmember Volin, since he did work hard on this, I believe, last fall, a chance to say a few words, and to maybe elaborate on the history of the Servas move, to move water from Lake Monroe, and a little bit of history of, of Bloomington and IU and water.
Thank you, Councilmember Ruff. My, my voice, I'm getting over a cold. This came on our radar December 1st, 2003, so our last meeting was December 13th, I think. There was barely any time to get a resolution on the agenda, and I think President Pete Monmouth Smith might recall how full that agenda was for the last meeting. I had a piece of legislation on that, of an ordinance on that final agenda. So it was very late, but I immediately recognized the danger, and when, I think the, the email was a sort of a scattershot, just sending it out to see if anybody else thought the same, and it certainly rang a bell. First, I want to read a passage from Indiana University Midwestern Pioneer. This is a four, four tome set of the history of IU, published in 1970 by Thomas Dionysius Clark. And forgive the sexism in this passage, but I think it will underscore for you the significance of this resolution. Clark writes, "Water insufficient and pure supply was almost as grave a problem for Indiana University as financial support from the state. This was a perennial problem, except that it had grown more serious by 1914, and the city fathers of Bloomington were vague about their plans to supply the institution. Otherwise, the university was faced with closure." This letter was written by the trustees and then-President William Lowbryan to the mayor and common counsel of the city of Bloomington. May 13th, 1914. "Gentlemen, I beg to ask that the trustees of Indiana University may meet you for a conference on the water situation in Bloomington on Wednesday, May 20th. We should prefer the hour of 1:30 p.m. so that all the trustees may be able to arrive, and so that they may be able to go away at 4 o'clock. The authorities of the university have no desire to interfere in local matters. On the other hand, they feel a heavy responsibility for the health and well-being of the young people from all parts of the state who are..." who are under their charge. The university has been gravely injured three times by water famines. Last fall, the university could not have opened at all except for the fact that the university had provided a supply of water for its own use, which, however, did not make provision for the students at their places of residence. Those who are charged by the state with the responsibility for the university wish to know definitely what the prospects are for an immediate water supply during the coming summer and fall and what assurances can be given to the state for an adequate supply in the future. They wish to inform themselves as fully as possible with regard to the situation for their own guidance and in order also to report the facts to the governor of Indiana." What's significant about this is that it was the state that chose where the university would be located. And they happened to choose it in a place that apparently did not have enough water for its future. It was the state that chose Indianapolis, or what is now Indianapolis, as a location for its state capital. And it chose that location because it was the geographic center of the new state, regardless of what resources happens to be there. And so when the Army Corps of Engineers decided to build Lake Monroe, or as also known as Monroe Reservoir in the early 1960s, the state then purchased roughly 120 gallons a day of water flow to be able to use. Any more than that, and you would drain the lake to the point where it could not be used at all. And there's a lot of complicated history there. So it was the only thing that, the problem of water for IU and for Bloomington as a whole lasted until Lake Monroe. It was a constant source of problem. You can hear the dramatic issue it was for IU in its history. So in 2006, which was my first term on council, when then-former city-county councillor Bert Servas was proposing a development in the community of Geist to bring water from Lake Monroe, a 60-mile trip, they were proposing to use 90 million gallons a day. The city of Bloomington itself has the capacity to process 25 million gallons a day. And at the time of this, it was using maybe 15. Nevertheless, it was an existential concern for the city that this might happen. I'd also note that Herald Times reporting at the time noted that the second reason they were claiming they wanted the water was to provide drought relief for Indianapolis. I think it was incumbent upon the state to make better choices about water rather than putting it on the community of Bloomington, which by now was utterly dependent on this source of water. So with that, I would say that, I mean, we immediately responded, the entire community responded. Mayor Cruzan, of course, opposed it. But it wasn't until then-Governor Daniels openly and publicly frowned upon the idea that the idea was scotched, although former councilmember Servas claimed that he was not the one who pulled the plug on the proposal. So it wasn't denied. The developer did not withdraw willingly. It is pretty clear that the IEDC is proposing something in the same way that this was proposed. There aren't sufficient water resources in Boone County to do what they want to do there, which is water-intensive. And they either need to move the Leap District to a place that has sufficient water. I'm sure that we would be willing to consider it, considering that enhanced semiconductor is coming here, partly because there is water supply. I'm sure that the mayor of Attica, the mayors of Lafayette or West Lafayette would be delighted if they were to form the Leap District there. But the simple fact is that until the state of Indiana has a reliable water plan, we're all potentially going to be fighting our fellow Indiana communities over water. And just the sheer carbon footprint that, you know, that would be created by moving the water 60 miles, which is the same length, by the way, that they proposed to move water from here to Geist. They're proposing a 60-mile pipeline from the Wabash River. So it's not like they're even close to the Wabash. I think that this is an existential matter for this. This was an existential matter for the city of Bloomington. It is an existential matter for anyone who lives along the Wabash River. And it would be remiss of us to not contribute this knowledge and to chime in in the same way. I wish I could have authored this resolution in December. I'm grateful to Councilmember Ruff for inviting me to say a few words about it tonight. Happy to answer any questions. I highly recommend Thomas Clark's History of IU. Thank you.
Thank you, former Councilmember Volin. I would just, at this time, ask if Councilmember Rallo, as cosponsor, has anything to add at this point?
Yes, of course.
Okay, I'll add a few things. I think that Councilmember Volin made a really good point, and that is to appreciate the scale of this. 100 million gallons a day is potentially, that it will withdraw water is four times what we withdraw from Lake Monroe every day for 145,000 residents. So it's just incredible, the scale. The other thing I wanted to mention was a New York Times article that was on August 28th of last year. It's really excellent. And I've, my computer's shut down. Anyway, it's on the declining aquifers of America. And that 40% of aquifers are suffering decline. So water's getting scarce and it's getting valuable. It's a common good. I think we need a water policy for the state. The state's failing essentially communities right now in terms of their water policy. There is much good evidence, information in the Citizen Action Coalition report. I'd like to submit that this evening as an addendum for the council, for the public record. There's just so many questions about this. The electricity use as well is just mind-boggling. It might consist of 26% to 32% of the equivalent of all residential electric utility users in the state. And that has knock-on effects for more water because of the cooling of power plants. So a lot of this looks like the costs are going to be externalized to the public, both ecological, environmental costs, but also ratepayer costs. There's an example within the CAC report that refers to battery manufacturing plant, Terre Haute, where, when it was deployed and ended up adding demand that was then subsidized by ratepayers. So there's so many questions that remain about who's going to pay for the $2 billion pipeline that runs 50 to 60 miles and who will manage it? The potential volume of waste and wastewater has not really been addressed. And then lastly, as Councilmember Ruff said, I don't like the secretive nature of this process. This requires really the informed and activated citizenry. I think that it's been secretive to avoid that, to fast-track this. So I'm really averse to the nature of this, that it's been hidden from public view until relatively recently. So I'm happy that this has been brought forward. And I'm hoping that other resolutions follow from around the state because I think this threatens all of west central Indiana in a very vital sense, because it is their water source. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask, I see we have some members of the administration still with us. Does the administration have any comments on this resolution? Mayor Thompson.
Thank you. I wanted to highlight that this pipeline is actually currently paused under study that is being completed. And so I would, for a number of reasons, I would ask council to table this resolution until at least the time that that study is complete and we know if the pipeline is even planned. The Leap District is, in fact, not a secret. It's been quite public. And in fact, it has been a strategic project of the state that has successfully attracted businesses to the district. Really, in many ways, a groundbreaking economic development district. It will impact wages and job growth in Indiana and indeed, set a precedent for how we can do economic development, even here in Bloomington. Of course, we are concerned about water sources. And if the council is to move forward with some type of resolution, I would ask that you consider that resolution to be one that is urging a comprehensive water plan for a state rather than simply opposing a pipeline. Indeed, we are reliant on a single source of surface water here in Monroe County in Bloomington. And I believe we need to create some redundancy at some point. That may cause us to need to tap some other kind of water or indeed, to build a pipeline ourselves. And so I hope that we're considering that as we're moving forward. If this is moving forward, I would ask that the city council amends this resolution, if it moves forward as a resolution, to say, instead of saying the city of Bloomington's opposition to the construction, it should say the city council of Bloomington, at least until the mayor and the city council have time to discuss this together. We have had no conversation about this. Indeed, my name lands then on the final approval if this moves forward as a resolution. The other alternative for the council, of course, would be to submit this as a letter of opposition, which would require no signature by the mayor. This is not an issue that will impact the programs or the fiduciary responsibility of the city. And so indeed, it does not touch the executive branch in any manner. And I guess, finally, I'll just note that the timing of this is a bit unfortunate while the General Assembly is still in session and while we have a proposal that has been submitted on behalf of our region to the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. And that is in the amount of $75 million. And in fact, this Leap District is also an IEDC project. And perhaps the one of which they are most proud. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, now we'll open it up for councilmember comments, or, I'm, questions, I'm sorry, for the sponsors, for some of the experts that they had via Zoom participate in the presentation or for the administration. Let's start with any questions for the sponsors or for their allies who are on Zoom tonight. Councilmember Flaherty.
Could the sponsors of the resolution speak at all to the timing and the sensitivity around timing of this issue? So Mayor Thompson just noted a pause as well as some other timelines with the IEDC. Similarly, I know we've heard concerns from some constituents. And also, I'd like to hear from City Bloomington Utilities about water resiliency planning in this context. And I don't think we're going to be able to do so tonight. So can, I guess, can you explain the urgency to pass this tonight to me? Thank you.
I have some things to say about that, but I would like to ask Councilmember Sanders from West Lafayette to talk about the urgency and about the fast-tracking of this and why it's important for us to move on this now. And I'd also like to point out, the pause issued by the governor on the project is part of a resolution. That's not, I mean, that's one of the wherethas, right? So that's part of what we've acknowledged and talked about in the resolution. So please, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. So the original studies were under the purview of the IEDC that previously has had no experience whatsoever with water issues. It was mentioned by the mayor of Attica about water going to Illinois. What's interesting is that the Secretary of Commerce said that this project is not a threat to Tippecanoe because as long as these aquifers are connected to the Great Lakes, there's an infinite supply of water. Unfortunately, they're not attached to the Great Lakes. And so the IEDC's understanding of this project and its potential harm to Tippecanoe is definitely in question. To go a little further about the pause, what happened was because of the resolutions and because of the existence of the opposition, manifested in part by Stop the Water Steal, that is what led the governor to redirect supervision of the water studies from IEDC to IFA. The so-called pause on the project is a bit illusory. There was no way that they were already going to be starting to build the pipeline. They don't have the monetary resources. But they already did invest money, millions of dollars, into studies for the pipeline. So the pause is a little bit of a sham, to be honest. To address the issue of, you know, if Bloomington passes this resolution, that it might antagonize the IEDC, that this is a dangerous time, I don't think that that's appropriate for government, a government agency to act that way, to decide on whether a project should go forward with one of the communities in Indiana on the basis of whether they do or do not pass a resolution about a pipeline diverting 100 million gallons a day from aquifers to a industrial project. That doesn't seem to be-- Yes, please.
That's okay, just, I was hoping to get it--
By all means.
--answered, which is, is there an impact for this date specifically as opposed to say one month from now or two months from now? Is there an impact anticipated of what passing a resolution tonight versus a month or two from now might have? That, just very narrowly that, if either the sponsors or someone else. And with no disrespect intended, I appreciate the points you're making, just trying to keep it on that question. Thank you.
That's fine. I didn't realize that I was supposed to be addressing that when I received the question when it was opening up. But, you know, I can't tell you that it makes the difference now versus, you know, a week from now or a month from now. But there is an urgency to getting this conversation more widespread in the state. The more communities that recognize this as an issue publicly, the more likelihood there is that the state is going to feel a need to address this. I fully concur with the mayor that the most important outcome will be some approach to state management of our water resources. But I'm going to say this didn't, you know, that hasn't just been an issue now or recently. It's been a long-term issue. But it's because of these resolutions, which are being passed by communities all over the state, that this has entered into the conversation. And it's only being taken seriously because local government has decided to step up and make its voice heard on this issue. So a delay of, you know, a week or a month, I can't tell you that that is, that's going to be critical. I don't see why you would want to delay action on this, on this issue. I don't think that that, you know, advances the conversation. I think it would be great if Bloomington would today add its voice to that of, you know, many communities around the state.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Other questions for the sponsors? Councilmember Asari.
Thank you so much and also to our esteemed visitors and colleagues today. Councilmember Ruff or any of the sponsors or supporters, I'm just curious if we've done any engagement with the IEDC directly around this question.
I've not done any.
Engagement with the IEDC and there hasn't really been opportunity, like with the Interstate 69 project that we spent so long in this community fighting. There were public meetings held regularly regarding that project where we regularly engage within INDOT, but the IEDC is a quasi-private, public entity that doesn't operate that way. So, no. So the answer is no.
So this is, this is the reason why I brought up the question because first and foremost, it was just last week that the Secretary of Commerce was here in Bloomington at the BEDC annual meeting. This question actually was brought up in public at the meeting. Myself and Councilmember Stossberg were there and following, people had open discussion with the IEDC and the Secretary of Commerce on this question. And even today, I called the chief of staff at the IEDC, they answered and were themselves surprised that we had introduced such a resolution without engaging. Now, I take the general concerns around the structure of the IEDC. I think we've also noted in the resolution, the, our desires and our celebration of the pause, though one of the supporters has said that that pause is maybe irrelevant. But I think the reality is that we as a community have a very good relationship with the IEDC and it is not the custom, and note that I'm the one saying this, but it is not the custom of this body to introduce resolutions and not give all sides the opportunity to give information. In fact, I will note that on one occasion, I tried to move to vote on something that we all unanimously agreed on and it was said that we could not do that because we had not yet given opportunity for others to comment on it. So us moving at this time to vote on something that we have not engaged all of the stakeholders on, I think is, is something that we should reconsider. And so I would second what the mayor has asked for us simply to table, to give us more time to actually do the proper stakeholder engagement. And then likewise, I have some amendments. If we are to move to pass this, I have some amendments that I would like to add, which I'm prepared to give today, but I just think that we need to not rush things, we should do them well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Asari. And we are during the question period right now, so we will, we will come to comments a little bit later. So are there questions? And questions from council members of the City of Bloomington at this point? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, I wanted to ask Professor Sanders his opinion of the open nature of the IEDC in terms of, in terms of this project. I mean, the Citizen Watchdog Group, the Citizen Action Coalition mentions that their questions were not answered and there have been, there are many questions remaining. The report, which is excellent on WTHR, went to the IEDC and failed to get any answers, failed to get an interview. What's your experience?
Thank you very much for that opportunity. And I'm really pleased that the IEDC comes to Bloomington and is willing to engage with you. They have been repeatedly invited to Tippi Canoe County to address these issues and they have refused every single time. So we have, it's not, again, this is, goes across the political spectrum. Our county commissioners, our League of Women Voters have asked the IEDC to show up in advance to discuss this very issue. They've absolutely refused. If you are familiar with the project, the Secretary of Commerce made no comment on this until comparatively recently. He only responded once the resolutions and the organizations started forming. There was no response whatsoever. So, you know, I'm glad, you know, it's, I'd love to have been there, to be present when the Secretary of Commerce was addressing issues on this and so would most of the people I know in Tippi Canoe County. They would have loved to have been there and I certainly hope that they will now seeing what a, what a great opportunity it was to speak to the people of Bloomington, that they'll avail themselves of that same opportunity to speak with us. We'd be happy to host them.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruff, you had a question?
I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Sanders' comment. So not only did, one, Councilmember Asari mentioned outreach to the IEDC. It doesn't sound like the IEDC, early in this process, in any way, shape, form, reached out to the communities of your region of Indiana about this project. And not only did they not reach out, they have not, they refused to engage at invitation of stakeholders.
That's absolutely correct. That's absolutely correct. It seemed as if they did not think that such a withdrawal of water was our concern at all. They did not have any sort of conception that this might be important to us and that public engagement was an important part of their activities.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Asari?
I forgot the gentleman's name.
Councilmember Sanders.
Councilmember Sanders. Is it not the case that the governor and I think the Senate President or something came to West Lafayette to discuss this?
That is absolutely correct. So following the resolutions, following the creation of Stop the Water Steel and the town halls, the governor and the, I hope I'm getting this right, the president pro tempore and the House Speaker all came up. It was an unprecedented event. It didn't, it was not the IEDC though. They came up and met with our local stakeholders, commissioners, representatives of Purdue, representatives of the Chamber of Commerce and, you know, tried to explain the situation. But it was not the IEDC itself that participated in any of those, any of those discussions. And again, they only occurred because of the great extent of opposition. It wasn't that this is something that, in a proactive way, there was outreach to the community. And I will share with you, the commissioners, in particular, the Tippi Canoe County commissioners, were absolutely blindsided by this whole, this whole process and continue to this day to be quite concerned about the lack of accountability and the lack of transparency.
Wonderful, thank you.
I can't formally speak on their behalf.
Of course, yeah.
I feel very confident I'm reflecting their approach.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Professor Sanders.
Other questions about the resolution? Are there any questions for the administration regarding the resolution or their position? Okay, seeing none, we will go, oh, Councilmember Flaherty.
Just seeking confirmation that we haven't had any formal weighing in from City Bloomington Utilities at this point, have we? Okay, we have not.
Mayor Thompson says no, CBU has not been. Could you please approach the mic just so we get that on record? Thank you. Sorry to make you walk up again.
They have not been asked to opine on this.
Thank you. Clarification, they maybe received materials or something, is that right, Council Attorney Lucas? But just, yes, point of clarification or information.
This resolution was shared last week with the mayor's office and the legal department, including the attorney for CBU, with an invitation to share any feedback or concerns.
Staff has seen it, but CBU Board, which is the policymaking authority, has not had a chance to review this. I don't think they've had a meeting where this has been on their agenda. But council staff did share it with, with legal staff and we, I passed it on to Chris Wheeler, who is the attorney. But I've had no conversations with John Langley and I don't think the utility service board has had a chance to weigh in yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we go to the public? All right, let's go to the public. Is there any public comment on Resolution 202404?
Good evening, my name is Jen Pearlton, President of the Blueys County Foundation Corporation. We're a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County in encouraging the creation of quality jobs that raise wages for the community. And I actually wanted to start by thanking Councilmember Ruff for taking my call today and talking about this issue. And thank you to Councilmember Asari, who is our liaison from council as well. We always really appreciate the dialogue with council. We agree on the importance of protecting water and questions should always be asked about economic development. You know, we need to make sure that projects are a good fit for any community. The BEDC does this regular vetting with any projects we bring forward locally and we live here too, so these things are important to us. However, we're concerned about the resolution sending a negative message to the IEDC, which is a partner with many entities across the community or to the general public that we're not welcoming of partnership or business. Also, multiple organizations across our region and county regularly partner with the IEDC, which has proven to be a very collaborative partner over the last several years. The BEDC works with them on state incentives for local job growth and for site readiness. Just last week, they committed support to SIMTRA, which was formerly Baxter, related to the company's plans to invest $225 million in Monroe County. The IEDC also partners with and funds initiatives around the region like READY. The point being is that we have great channels for engaging directly with the IEDC for any concerns that come up. We found them to be very receptive of questions and concerns. I spoke with a member of the IEDC leadership team today and he said he'd be happy to follow up with any local questions on this issue in particular. Water and employment are both critical things in a community, so the BEDC would like to offer the channels that we have for more detailed conversations to ensure that we're planning for a strong future for our neighbors. The relationships we have and the channels that we have as a community are part of our strength and so I'd love to be able to offer that as an opportunity as we consider next steps. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Lucas, could you please make the announcement for people on Zoom?
Yes, if there are any speakers on Zoom, please let us know that you'd like to comment by raising your hand or sending a chat to the meeting host.
And I see another speaker here. Please state your name for the record and you'll have up to three minutes.
Thanks. Good evening, Tina Peterson, President and CEO, the Community Foundation of Bloomington Monroe County and also Regional Opportunity Initiatives, which serves the 11 counties of the Indiana Uplands. Thanks for the opportunity to participate tonight. I don't get, I don't, I don't have the opportunity to be here very often in these chambers and it's nice to be here. I would like to add my voice to those asking that we table this for the time being, that we create greater opportunity for more people to participate in the conversation. I have some concerns, not, I agree with the importance of talking about and considering the issues related to water here and across the state. However, I am a bit concerned about how we might be conflating the issues of innovation and water here. And as a community, that's very innovation economy-based and representing an organization that's really trying to drive innovation investment in our region as a way to raise per capita income, to grow population and to achieve a better quality of life for those who live here. I think it would be great for us to make sure that we are engaging those in this conversation that have the opportunity, right, to benefit from the strategies that you're pursuing here. And so my request is only that you table this and take the opportunity to engage more of us in this conversation and to Jen's comment about the work we're doing as a region, I would hate for us inadvertently through this conversation that should be involving the IEDC to really negatively impact the opportunities we have right now. We have had a great relationship with IEDC as it relates to the READY initiative. They have made investments in this community and the communities that surround us and we do again, have the opportunity to pursue additional funding, support, opportunity, including innovation in our particular region. And I am a bit troubled that we have not had the conversation with organizations like IEDC or like mine as we're thinking about this opportunity. And so I want to thank you for the opportunity to share that this evening.
Any other comments on this resolution?
Good evening, Madam President. This is Christopher Engie from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I just want to echo Ms. Peterson's comments from ROI and Ms. Pearl's from the BEDC. I think this thing should be tabled. I think we don't have a clear picture right now in order to sort of make this resolution, this message we want to send. We can take some time, make some, a few phone calls and I think we'll have a little bit clearer heads as we move forward. I thank you for your time tonight. Thanks.
Is there anybody online who would like to comment? Anybody else here in council chambers? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the council. And now would be an appropriate time for any motions or comments or if there are follow-up questions, I would entertain those as well. Okay, Councilmember Ruff? Go ahead.
Yeah, I may be able to save us some time tonight. I do look forward to asking the IEDC why they didn't respond to WTHR Channel 13 investigative reporter for eight months, of eight months, a solid request. I also look forward to asking them why they refused requests from Tippi Canoe County and Attica and West Lafayette and other communities over and over again. You know, the idea that this is not a resolution opposing or criticizing the IEDC. It's literally called, it's literally called a resolution opposing the LEAP Pipeline Water Diversion Project. That's all it is. That's what it says. And in it, it refers to IEDC's lack of transparency in initiating this project. It's very specific about this project. It's not a general criticism of the IEDC. I remember during the, this reminds me a lot of the I-69 discussions, which went on for decades actually, but that, that there were people in the community who felt like, oh, this, this will sour our relationship with INDOT and then we won't get funds from INDOT for other unrelated transportation funds, unrelated to I-69. You know, they were going to withhold funds, they're going to not give us transit grants, they're not going to, you know. And at one point, the INDOT openly threatened to do that, sort of blackmail. That actually happened, if you went back through the debate. A little of that reminds me here, you know, we should be able to oppose or criticize this project without being accused, oh, or feeling like we're risking our relationship and wishing future resources and access to the IEDC. All right? That's not what this is about. To address a couple of the points that were made, I'm glad Mr. Lucas pointed out, this was shared last week with the administration. It was in the packet, it went out. This is how we do business, right? I waited to hear from people. I think Mr. Lucas can confirm that at the end of Friday evening, afternoon, I think I called him and said, Stephen, do you think I should actively be reaching out to all these organizations? Because I don't have a lot of time. Because I don't have a lot of time and it is out in the packet and that's the way we do business. We put it out and, you know, people respond. So I started getting responses today at about four o'clock or 3:30, literally. That's when they came in. They started coming in. So I guess what I'd like to say at this point is that I certainly respect my fellow council members, my council colleagues' desire to learn more, to ask questions, to be, to reach out, learn more, be more inclusive, engage other stakeholders, et cetera. I respect that very much. I can understand why they wanted to do that. And so out of that respect for the council members and the council as a body, a deliberative body, I will, I will move that we postpone or table, what, Mr. Lucas, what is the proper? Postpone to a specific date? Is that what we want to do?
Because the council has the next two weeks off, I would suggest if you all think this is enough time to postpone this resolution until the March 27th regular session, if you would like to table this and not have a defined date to take it back up, a motion to table might be more appropriate, but given the three-week gap, I would suggest a motion to postpone. And then if at that meeting you need additional time, you could postpone further.
Okay, okay. So postponing until that date doesn't necessarily lock us into that. If, if there are other things on the agenda that are going to be time-consuming and demanding, we can extend again?
So, is that a motion, Councilmember Ruff?
Yes, it's a motion.
Or did you want to hear from?
Oh. Oh.
I believe it's debatable. Is that right, Mr. Lucas? Or Ms. Stasburg? Okay.
It's debatable.
Thank you. So is that a motion, Mr. Ruff? Sorry.
It is a motion.
Okay. Is there a second? Thank you. So we have a motion to postpone Resolution 2024-04 to the March 27th regular session and a second discussion. Councilmember Asari?
I support the idea of tabling it, but I just wonder if for the efficiency of time so that we don't have to do all of this all over again when we reintroduce it, that we can just finish having, giving our input to this. I don't, you know, I think our input might not be, you know, as controversial as our questioning might have suggested.
Yes. Let's take this opportunity to give feedback, not just on the motion. Mr. Lucas or Parliamentarian Stasburg, once this motion is voted on, would there be another opportunity to discuss the actual resolution or should we take this opportunity before the vote on the motion?
This motion is debatable to the extent needed to consider whether to postpone or not. Once you have decided to postpone, no, no additional discussion tonight would make sense or be in order. We'd be
Proposal here is saying we don't want to vote for this motion now, but we're asking that he reintroduce it after we finish the discussion.
At the option of the individual who made the motion, given that we now understand that we cannot discuss the actual merits of the resolution with this motion on the table, would there be an inclination to withdraw the motion and make it a little bit later?
You mean make it a little bit later?
Tonight.
Tonight?
So basically, the only thing we can talk about right now is whether or not we postpone it until the two, three weeks from now, whereas if you withdraw the motion, then we can actually talk about the resolution again before thinking about tabling.
You made the motion, it's on the table. It's up to you whether to withdraw.
It seems to me, the reason I am proposing to table, to postpone to a specified, specified date is because we don't have the information, apparently, and haven't had the discussions that we need to have, which will be taking place between now and that date. So I don't see the reason to withdraw my motion and then allow more discussion when the whole reason is we're kind of not at a point where most council members feel comfortable that they know enough and have talked to enough people about this. And that's not going to take place in the next 10 minutes of discussing. So I'm not going to withdraw my motion. I'm just going to leave it. Let's vote on postponing till the, or table, postponing to the 27th.
Very good. So any more discussion on the motion to postpone? Councilmember Rallo?
I support the motion. I think that what we could, what it would entail is, I think, and I would look to council leadership for some advice as to when to, if we don't take this up on the 27th and we arrange another date, I think this really is an important issue and it really bears a thorough presentation on what the process has been. And I would like to invite the Citizen Action Coalition and other interested citizen groups to come and talk about exactly their experiences and we could invite a representative of the IEDC here for questions and various media. So this could be a really informative event to dig down, drill down on this publicly. Thank you.
Any other comments on the motion? All right. Well, the deputy clerk, Ms. Stoll, welcome. Your nameplate still says Nicole Bolden, but we know you are Susan Stoll.
Yes.
If you could please call the role on the motion to postpone to March 27th.
Councilmember Pete Matsmith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
No.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
That motion passes with a vote of eight to one. Then we will move on to the next item on our agenda. And I do encourage members to discuss this motion in the interim or the resolution in the interim with the sponsors. Next, we will move to legislation for first readings.
2024-02 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the deputy clerk please read?
Ordinance 24-02. To amend Title VIII of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding Lower Cascades Park, Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission petitioner. Synopsis. This ordinance amends Chapter Eight, Point 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled The List of Designated Historic Districts in order to designate Lower Cascades Park as a historic district. The Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission, after a public hearing February 23rd, 2024, recommended that the park be designated historic with a rating as contributing. This rating was based upon certain historic and architectural criteria set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 8.08.010C entitled Historic District Criteria. Local designation will provide the protection needed to ensure that this property is preserved.
Thank you. And we will discuss this ordinance at our regular session on March 27th. Now we come to our second period of public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. If anybody in council chambers would like to make a comment, please come to the podium. You'll have up to three minutes. And Mr. Lucas, will you please make the announcement?
Yes. There are members of the public that wish to speak. Please let us know by raising your hand in Zoom or sending a chat message to the meeting host.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, President, council members, distinguished staff. This is Christopher M. G. again from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. You'll notice I'm a little bit disheveled or what you would say more disheveled than usual. I'm fresh from Twin Lakes Third Grade Championship Game where I coached to a victory and I wanted to say a special thank you to Scott Peterson of the award-winning Parks Department for putting that on. It was a crazy game. If you want details, please see me afterwards. I know it's, I know it's been stated, but I want to echo the congratulations to Councilmember Daley for winning District Five caucus. This is my home district. As many of you know, I'm proud active resident of Sunny Slope neighborhood and look forward to many conversations with her. Next, I want to thank Councilmember Flaherty for bringing up the community survey last week during the CIB Convention Center debate. The survey is the only representative statistically valid tool to gauge our residents' opinion on my rate of issues. And yes, it remains underutilized. I am guilty of that as well. If you recall, I stood before this body last July talking about my reaction to it and then claiming I would be back to address other aspects of it, but I have no record of ever bringing it back up again. Mr. Lucas, the slides. Which brings me back to one of the two priority points of the chamber, which Councilmember Rosenbarger brought up, housing, last week during the CIB debate, but the other is public safety. And that is one of our two legislative priorities by our members and it, one of the items we agreed on, the chamber, was to advocate for increased presence and visibility of police officers and patrols throughout Bloomington and implementation of strategic community policing initiatives within the downtown boundaries. With the 20% shortage of sworn police officers, the community survey noted a ratings quality of police services continually declining. 83% said excellent or good in 2019 while 60% in 2001 and 46% in 2023. That's seven, 16% of math. And in our survey, the, we had three fourths felt that the BEPD staffing shortage hurt the perception of public safety. So if you look at the statistics there, three fourths of residents on the perception of public safety over the years felt that their neighborhood was only 68%, or excuse me, three fourths of residents felt safe in their neighborhood at night in 2001 and only 68% felt the same in 2023. And specifically feeling downtown safety at night dropped from six in 10 in 2001 to four in 10 in 2023. Remember, this is perception. Ratings for crime prevention also continued to decline. It was 61% in 2019, 54% in 2021, and now 38% just last year. All of this lags behind the national and peer community average. I've been encouraged by the administration so far and through dialogue on the subject at the showers west mayor council meeting that happened a few weeks ago, talking about policing. The family resource department hired, I believe, two after-hours midnight mayors, Charles Culp's, whatever you want to call them, to address the issue of presence downtown. If you recall during the budget hearings, I think that was August, September, that we wanted 10 Charles Culp's or 10 after-hours ambassadors. Just today, I had a coworker of mine rave about the mental health 101 training she received at the city. This issue won't go away and it just continues to be brought up that we have this dialogue on that. And while the statistics might not bear out this, the reality of the perception is people aren't feeling safe, we need to do something about it, specifically in our downtown area, where I received at least two calls regarding this, where people feel like maybe they've been followed. So I just want to encourage everyone just to keep thinking about public safety, which is an essential service and I thank you for your time tonight. Good night.
Mr. Lucas, is there anybody online who would like to comment?
No. I see.
Anybody else in council chambers? All right. Then we will move on to matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas, do you have any things to highlight for us tonight?
Reminder that the council's next meeting will be March 27th. So you've got the next two weeks off, although there are a couple of committee meetings in between now and that date, so we'll, we'll look to meet with those groups, but we'll see you all back here on March 27th.
Any other, anything else? Anybody wanted to report something? Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
The tiniest report. This just happens, this happened for the last four years, but a white man did not bring up the community survey last week. I brought it up and then another council member weighed in on it. It just happens a lot that women don't get proper credit for what they say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, I think that's it for our business this evening and thank everybody and good night.